Select board meeting.
I'll second it.
Lee is the motion and Heather is the second. Any changes, corrections, omissions, errors, anything on the minutes?
I found on page three, very small, line 13, we were awarded the $35,000 grant from the Firehouse Subs, not they.
Anything else? Anybody?
That's all I found.
On the visitors, the list, we had our principal from our high school, and I think they called you Keith Hall II. I believe it's Keith Hill. You are the second though, correct? Anything else? Anybody? No? All those in favor of approving the minutes as corrected, please say aye.
Aye.
Next item is on our agenda, citizens comments. If there was someone here that would like to address the board regarding an issue that is not on the agenda, now would be the time to do so. Are there any citizens comments? We're just nodding their heads. No? Now move right along. And Julie, can you take us to our old business list?
I can. Short-term rentals, both versions of the policy have been sent to the attorney for review. I'm hoping I'll have them back for the November 16th meeting, and at which time you guys can make your decision if you're ready. Same thing with the Chester Community Garden. Simple lease has been drafted, sent to Jim, again, just waiting for his review. And Gary Rappinotti let me know that the cost for the survey is $1,800, and so he will be working on that soon.
Do you know what his schedule is?
Right away, I mean, he knew we were looking to...
I thought it was either gonna be late this week or early next week.
Okay.
Just curious.
I didn't see a date, but...
Yeah, yeah. No, I just was curious. That's the impression I got from the emails and stuff, that it was gonna be relatively soon once it was approved.
He was just waiting to hear back from me, which I emailed him the other day.
Okay. Thank you.
The police chief search, just to let everybody know, applications were due last Friday. We received six. Trevor Whipple from DLCT, Jim Baker, and myself actually met this afternoon to review them, go over them. We have it down to two, possibly three. So I've sent the email out to the committee that is gonna help me conduct interviews, and we're looking to schedule those the week of November 14th. So there is movement on that.
How many applications were there altogether?
Six.
Six. And three of them, or two or three are making it to the...
Correct. We know that two will make it to the next round. The third one, Jim has some questions for before we move forward. So potentially three.
And Julie, what's the schedule for selecting and hiring somebody? Is it next year, this year?
No, it'll be this year.
Okay.
It'll be this year. I'm really hoping that we'll have a decision by early December.
Okay.
Is my goal. Especially since we don't have, you know, 50 applications we've gotta go through, and it'll be a simpler process, which is good.
Is the current police chief, he's on until the end of the year, December? What was his date for his...
Rick's official date of retirement is January 7th, simply because that's the end of a payroll period. Just kind of flowed better. And then the police department update, I did have heard from an individual in town who was asking about the status of the advisory committee. So I figured maybe it's a good time to just update the board and get it out there for anybody else that is inquiring. My feeling is just kind of holding off until we get that new chief. Right now, we are understaffed. So if we form a committee, the police department is not gonna be able to provide them. There's just no staffing to do that right now. We are still trying to fill Sergeant Frank's position now that he is retired, you know, which is holding up, and Rick is out on a medical leave. So we're operating down two officers right at the moment. This is just is not the time.
Have we had applications for that position, the sergeant position?
We...
Or patrolman, actually.
We have had two that we didn't feel would be a good fit for Chester. We are waiting because I do think, much like what happened with the town of Springfield, people are probably waiting to see who our chief is gonna be before we start changing around. The other, before they start leaving one job to come to another.
You think that's related, it'll have a...
I do. It happened in Springfield. It's happening all over the state. People want to know who those chiefs are before they leave what they have. But, you know, we are looking into, you know, rerunning the ad and putting some young person through the academy. You know, that may be our best, that may be our best interest. So we're just, we're kind of, we're getting everything covered between the three out full-time and the part-timers that we have. But with regard to the advisory committee, you know, if we could, number one, wait till our new chief is in place, because that person is gonna have a lot of input into interacting with that committee. There needs to be a part, he needs to be a part of that, or her, whoever it is. But, so anyway, that's where that's at. I know it probably feels like I'm stalling. I'm not stalling. I promise I'm not stalling. I actually have a lot that I could see as a benefit from that committee, but timing is everything. And just an update, the, more news, new business, but the Vermont Emergency Management received a grant, a federal grant, and so they have offered to replace our fingerprint machine, our printing machine. We've been having a hard time getting that funded through a grant. It's not really eligible for many of the emergency management grants that are out there, but the state got one and has replaced our machine. So we'll, again, be able to start doing fingerprinting again in Chester.
Well, that comes in handy for not just the criminal matters, but a lot of the town-related things, background checks.
Absolutely. We've been trudging along, but our machine is beyond, you can't get parts. I mean, it's old. It's old. That's it for me for old business.
Anybody else have any old business? Arnie? Phil?
Phil Lindsay, any progress on the solar product?
So we, I was given a list of items that were needed by the appraiser. I have provided what I can. The only other thing I have to do is get photos, but the rest of the information is coming from Greenbacker, and I'm just waiting on that information from them. But everybody's been connected. Yeah.
So the appraisal is almost finished on that then?
I'm hoping. They're just waiting on that last information from Greenbacker.
Thanks, Phil. Anything else on old business? Moving right along tonight. Next item on our agenda is a presentation from the supervisory union in the high school. I know you gentlemen were here at our last meeting, but because it was covered under citizens comments, there wasn't any chance to really have any questions or specific answers or questions from people that might have some. So we have Todd Perrin, who's the facilities manager, Keith Hill, who is the principal, and Josh Schroeder, who is a board member. And they're here to give us a little synopsis of the bond. And I guess you'll be repeating yourself kind of a little bit from last year, but I think it'll help just to get the word out there about what's going on. And after your presentation, there will be a time for questions or concerns, or anybody that has anything they would like to ask of the folks here. So it's up to you guys, who's giving the presentation. See if you can get that microphone up a little higher for you, Josh, or, yeah, you can get it lowered too.
How's this? Good. Josh Schroeder, school board member. Yeah, so a couple of weeks ago, we gave a kind of a brief, brief presentation, kind of get the word out there tonight. We're really excited to be on the agenda, so we can field any questions from the public or from you folks. And to assist fielding those questions, we brought Mike Davey, who is an employee of EEI. He's project manager for many projects and would be on the team for this project as well. So since my tenure on the, on the school board, we've been talking about this, you know, at least a year and a half now. And before that, Mike's been on the team at EEI for the last three to four years, or three and a half years. So he's really seasoned, can answer any questions that I can't. And Todd's been working with them right from the beginning. So essentially, I can, I can help answer questions now, I can turn it over. I don't know if we want to go into the great detail we did last time.
I think you can give us a short summary of what you had last time, kind of, just so refresh people's memory, or there might be some people that didn't hear it last time.
Sure thing. So for those of you who don't know, next Tuesday is voting day, and the school has a bond proposal. The supervisory union has a bond proposal for, in around $20 million. So the good portion of that, I think around just over 70%, is gonna be for the Green Mountain High School. So, high school, as you may or may not know, 50 years old, just over 50 years old, and not a lot has been done to the mechanical systems in the school, as well as the safety and security systems, for various reasons. As I mentioned last night in one of our informative meetings, it was built really well. The school was built really well, with really high-end mechanical equipment at the time, and it was also maintained super well. Todd and his predecessors have done a really excellent job at preserving the equipment that's there, helping it last a long time. They've been through a few changes. They updated one of the boilers, I think in the 80s, and that's been going along. But a lot of the systems that the boiler supports are nearing end of life. There's a, essentially, and Mike can really add to this, the control portion of the school is really, really obsolete. They use like a pneumatic control, and a lot of the valves stick and freeze. So you get a lot of overheating in some areas and a lot of cooling in other areas. So essentially, you're losing efficiency on a great scale just from the control end of it. So it's a huge portion of this is not only upgrading the, what we use to heat, but how that heat gets dispersed throughout each classroom. As many of you know, again, I mentioned it briefly last night, a couple of years ago, nobody, you know, really understood MERV rating, right? We all heard of HEPA, but we didn't really know what a MERV rating was. And that's kind of like a hot topic now since COVID. So to kind of go along with the times, the school board decided, in conjunction with EEI and some various research, that an actual ventilated system would be ideal for the school. So, and what that means is we're heating the air. We're gonna heat the air, and we're gonna filter the air. So now to stay in compliance with various regulations, the MERV rating of the school would be, of all the schools, would be a MERV 13, one of the highest ratings we can get before true HEPA. So kind of looking at the trend and where other schools are going, where other businesses and other facilities are going, the school board felt that that was probably the best direction to go. With that, we would get, so whole new ductwork. So basically, all the ceilings of all the school would be removed, and new ductwork would be installed in the, in the high school. And with that ductwork, we'll have, you know, better filtration while the ceilings are down, upgrade the lighting, some of those things kind of, they coincide together. It's nice to be able to do it in this large chunk. So, and we know it's a large chunk, but it's, it's just the time now to take a big bite and look at heating and ventilation, cooling, LED lighting, fire alarm control, sprinkler in some areas, upgraded elevator, a lot of code compliance issues, egress issues. Those egress issues fall into the Chester and over school as well, with upgrading some windows. And for you, those of you who may not be familiar with egress, it's, the schools are so old that back when they were built, we weren't, we were in compliance with the codes then. Well, now things have changed, and everything has changed. And so while we go through these major repairs, we could be asked by state fire marshal to upgrade certain areas of the building. So those areas, we've kind of already thought of, EEI's thought of, based on their experience, and they've got a good idea about what direction we might need to go. So there's, there's a lot of upgrades in this, in this bond proposal. So, and I'm sure there's a lot of questions, and I may not be able to answer them all, but I know that Todd and Mike behind me can help too. So basically, are there any questions now that I can...
I have a question. Since the majority of the budget proposal is going to the high school, can you tell me what the capacity of that building is and what the actual usage is, student-wise?
So the capacity now, well, I believe that the high school, everybody always talks about how big the high school was built for, and I believe it was around 700, but these guys...
Six.
600?
Yeah.
I was off by 100.
Current capacity is 340s.
Okay.
Mr. Hill, you're gonna have to get the microphone.
You could take it off the thing if you want.
So the school has been in around 350s, 340s for the past few years. That fluctuates more, we've seen in the last couple of years, as things, people seem to be more mobile these days and making different choices for their students and different choices for their families. So we do see a great fluctuation, but right now, we're at about 340.
So have you considered doing the building upgrades in pieces? Like, since you're using about three-quarters of the building, or two-thirds of the building, can you just cordon off one-third of it, do the work on that, and then just do it in a stepwise fashion?
So while we might have a reduced student number, the way the building is used compared to when it was built and utilized for the 600 students it had when it opened, is different. And we do use the entirety...
Oh, yeah. I'm sure you do, yeah.
So I'm not sure what it would look like to cordon off sections of the building, or if that is even a possibility. I don't believe...
Was that something you guys considered at all, or didn't even enter the equation?
Under its current use, I don't believe that was considered in the phasing process, because the space is used by the, you know, 350 students we have pretty consistently in all spaces.
Okay. Anybody else have any other questions? Gonna have to, we have an extra microphone, maybe we could...
Yeah.
Sure. Will you remove it?
No.
Okay. Oh, there we go.
Kathy Giratino, I was just wondering, was solar considered at all for the school? And I understand, I heard somewhere that the state might be providing electric school buses to some school districts. Is there any kind of electric charging station included if we were to get some of that?
In this, in this particular proposal, no. We talked about, we did talk about solar and what that might entail, and how that would go. And a lot of the, a lot of the discussion was based around the roof, and the roof is newer.
Recording stopped. No, sorry, go ahead. Just keep going. I think Susan jumped on.
Okay. However, we, we decided at the time that by the time the solar got put on and utilized to its full capacity, that we'd have to then change over the whole roof system. And while we started gaining, we would probably lose it all, and then we'd have to start over. So the, the best time to, to do solar is with a brand-new roof. Now, the roof isn't old. I think it were in five-year range. But we did talk about it, and we thought, goodness, by the time we get the solar installed, we could be at seven years now, then hopefully we wouldn't be looking forward to another 15. But at that point, we all heard about solar. By the time it pays for itself, we're in that 15- to 20-year range, and we'd have to take it off again and probably buy a new panel. So it's something on the, on the deck for the next 20 years, for sure, but...
What about charging stations?
Charging stations? I haven't, I know right now, our buses are fairly new, so we're gonna kind of use those to their maximum life. And so at some point, I think charging stations would, we would benefit from that. I think right now, I feel like personally, and I, I don't know if I'm speaking for the board at this point, but I feel like right now, we're just not at the time. The infrastructure just isn't quite there yet. I think we really wanted to focus on the safety, on the ventilation, and try and get some things upgraded. Cool. Thanks, Kathy.
I had a question for myself, and the, the numbers come up to like $21 million or somewhere thereabouts. And the next step is it goes out to bid, and this $21 million, is that an estimate, or is it a set number that's already in place? And is there any contingency that's built into it as far as what, and what percentage would that be? Because I know through the, through some of the dealings we had with town, that making sure that there was a contingency in there, a percentage, really helped because of the unknowns that come along when you're doing something like this.
So I can probably answer some of that, but Mike is gonna help out, of course. So yes, we're nearing the $21 million, and as soon as, if the, if the bond gets approved, EEI and the team will now go out for a bid for all of these things. These are, these are costs estimated based on their experience, what they've done, and what, who they've worked with for vendors, you know, sort of their experience with projects of this scale. So they're kind of swag numbers, but some of them are numbers based off last year's estimates. Some of them are swags and adjusted now with inflation and whatnot that we've all discussed. So essentially, as soon as it's voted, if it's voted yes, they'll get on that immediately. And Mike, do you want to add to that now, or?
No, the, the one thing that is helpful is we're doing two nearly identical projects to the Green Mountain High School simultaneously. So we're currently doing Springfield High School, which was built in the same era, and we had very current pricing based on that project. We also updated the pricing right before we had to bring it to the school board for the final bond vote. So we believe we've accounted for the inflation risk as much as possible. Then again, if inflation skyrockets another 20% in two months, we don't have that. But we really tried to keep, keep the pricing consistent. So we feel comfortable that the, the numbers that you have now reflect current pricing. Again, if future inflation keeps going out of control, we might be at risk, but we feel comfortable with it.
Thank you.
But there wasn't the answer about the contingency. What percentage is in the budget?
I believe we've included a 5% design and contractor's contingency.
5%.
Most of the, the mechanical end of it, is it for code compliance, or is it an upgrade just because the system is so old and so worn out, or that part of it?
Yeah, I think on the mechanical end of it, it's not necessarily geared more towards code compliance. I think in the mechanical end of it, we're fairly up to date with code. If we're talking about the fire alarm system and, and things like that, there's just no more room to add into that, and it's so old, we can't actually even really repair it. So, so if we're looking at those types of safety and security systems, those are just outdated to the point where we need to make a change. On the mechanical end of it, the heating and cooling, really, I don't know if there's an actual code for schools now being built. I'm sure there is for MERV rating. So everything on that end of it for air filtration is up to, would be up to code at that point. Right now, no, we're not, we're not anywhere near it. I think we're, for lucky, we may have a MERV 4, but, so, so I guess, hopefully that answers some of them. Maybe Todd can help.
So I can go into a little bit deeper than that, Arnie. So a couple of things that we're seeing that are really at the end of life. So it's a pneumatic system in the school, which air was great back in the early 70s, late 60s, early 70s, was the cat's meow, we'll say. You know, it was the greatest thing. Kind of gone by the wayside now in our pneumatic system. We're running on a secondary compressor right now, because the compressors that we had were original to the building, and one of them's broke. So we were thinking maybe along the line that this was gonna change. Our power tops are, a lot of them are original unit ventilators that were put in when the school was built, that are old and not working the way they should. That's why we have such a fluctuating temperature in classrooms. They're direct vent to the outside. So a lot of times, when the, the power tops open and close, they don't open and close properly, and you can look great clearly outdoors. So you're drawing, you're drawing amounts of blistering cold air or hot air into the building. The filtration was the other thing. We talked about this last night at the meeting at the school. Nobody thought about air exchanges an hour until COVID came along. And in a way, it was a good thing, maybe one of the best things that came out from COVID is how much fresh air are our children actually breathing. And this is something that the, every school and probably in the country dealt with. We had balancers come in, a balancer comes in, checks, see, air exchanges an hour, and all schools were meeting it. So this would change all that. We'd switch over to MERV 13 filters. We'd, you know, have complete control of the, the air exchanges an hour. So all these upgrades, all the stuff that was thought about, we're not meeting, and we're now gonna meet or exceed. So COVID helped us realize, bring the realization, that a lot of the mechanical issues were just stuff that we've been seeing over the years, is building up and building up and building up. And we, I could keep going if you want to be too. There's heaters in the gym that, you know, we're down to one, it should be two. And, you know, we have window issues that, you know, the windows are original to the building, the unit ventilators are direct-vented, so they're incorporated into the heating system, which again, was a great idea in the 70s, but not so much now. The high school has a large amount of asbestos, which everybody knows is, is awesome until you make it, you know, airborne, and then it's not so awesome. So there, we're gonna be removing a lot of that and just, and we understand, again, you've heard me say this before, we want people to vote informed. We're not here to convince anybody. We want everybody to know what, what we're looking at. We understand that it's a lot of money. We just, we're hoping that people vote informed.
So I have two questions. First relates to asbestos, and that is, is it mostly in the non-friable form right now, or friable?
All of it. All of it is not, we have a, so the book at school, and I think probably if you see it, I mean, I post it every year for the, for our asbestos manual. Anybody can come look at it. It's in the joints, in a joint.
So is it friable or non-friable? Like, is it insulation for pipes, or is it asbestos tiles, or?
There's some in the tiles. We've been told that there's some in the caulking to the windows. I'm not sure if everybody knows exactly where all of it is, until they get ready. I mean, asbestos in the late 60s and 70s was used in, you know, we do have some flooring tile that we know it's still in. We know there's some in joints in the pipes up above the ceilings. And we have been told that there's probably some in the caulking in the windows.
Okay. Thank you. And the second question had to do with, you keep mentioning that there are regulations coming out, and we have to meet standards or whatever. Where are those coming from? Is that a federal or state standard?
Which, which regulations?
I don't know. You tell me. I mean, you're talking about the MERV ratings and air exchanges and all that, so...
The air exchanges an hour were set forth during COVID.
Yeah, but who set those? Is that the state, federal?
I'm gonna have to say I don't know. I don't know if it was state or federal.
Okay.
I'm not sure. But we got, we got that, that they set a standard of how many air exchanges an hour per classroom.
Okay. Can I just ask one more question, and then you can answer them both? How much of what we're doing for, as part of this proposed budget, is related to mandates by the feds or the state, or is it just things that will make the school more comfortable, safer, that we want as a community? Who's driving the bus, I guess, is my question.
So, so it's a, that's a hard, the second one is a hard question to answer. The first one, I'm gonna take the easy one first. So there have been... There have been mechanical codes, so on the books since the 1970s about air exchanges. What happened is the broader public started paying attention to them in COVID. So the state of Vermont has had an energy code since I've been working here in the 2000s, and they've had a mechanical code. The thing is, there's no mechanical chief of police that's gonna come measure your airflow in this room. So by code, right, in this, in this room, you need 15 CFM of outdoor air for every person in the room. That's a code of the state of Vermont. You know, it's written by, by the federal ANSI and ASRAI, and then it's adopted by every state. So all 50... So all 50 states have adopted different years mechanical code. The thing is, there aren't there aren't really ventilation police. So when it gets enforced is when you do renovations or new drawings, and you then you go to the state fire marshal's office in Vermont. And that's so it's a combination. So so that and and when when Vermont set out guidance to start reopening for schools, the state turned to those codes that were already on the books and said, we want you to provide outdoor airflow at these rates. And so then they started looking at it. And so that's where it's be, you know, there's been more attention drawn to it, but those codes have always been on the the books, if you will. And they're typically are only enforced when you're going to do a major renovation, major addition, then you have an engineer stamped that you. So this school hasn't had a major renovation or addition in in my lifetime. So no one's really gone through and inspected it. The state fire marshal will do annual inspections, and they brought up some things, but a lot of this is being triggered more that the systems are at end of life. So one of the things that we've mentioned in our presentation is the state ranked all the school districts throughout the state, and this district was in the top 10 of most depleted infrastructure. Means there were there are some districts around Burlington that are like 2%, like Winuski, 2% depleted. It means they have almost all new stuff. In Green Mountain, I believe it was 87 or 89% depleted, meaning most of your infrastructure, your moving, your HVAC systems, your boilers, your fire alarms, your roofs are, you know, about 89% of them are at their full depreciation in life. So what's driving this project isn't like the federal government saying, you have to do this. It's, hey, the systems are really old. They need to be upgraded. If we upgraded them, should we replace them just as they are, the bare minimum? Or should we try and make them energy efficient and try and get another 50 years out of this infrastructure, the way you got 50 years out of the first? So I think that's what's driving it. It's we looked at, you know, there are some cheaper ways to do some of the things we're doing. So we're adding in the better filtration, the better ductwork, which is better for noise, air quality, controllability, and we're bringing it up to the current code.
So, yeah, thank you. The the follow up question to that is, to what design standard was the upgrade, proposed upgrades for each classroom as far as air exchanges, assuming a certain class size? And what is that class size? And how does it relate to the current class sizes?
So so it's designed, so the Vermont code tells you how much you you have to do. So for every classroom, it's it's a combination of the square footage. So a typical classroom is 900 to 1,000 square feet. So you have to bring in, you have to multiply. So if it's a this is into the weeds a little bit, but it's you have to bring multiply by .15 times the square footage. So if you're in a 1,000 square foot classroom, you need to bring in 150 CFM just for the space. Then it's about 10 to 15 CFM per per people. It depends on how many are in there. And by that, you go by the the allowable fire marshal of the space. So a typical classroom, that might be 30 people. And so you might say, well, okay, our classrooms would only have 20 or 15. What we monitor, each classroom will have a CO2 monitor, and it'll modulate the outdoor air based on how many people are in the room. So it's designed for full load, but it has the ability to modulate down to partial load.
Okay, that's what I was wondering was whether we were designing for full capacity.
We're designing for full with the ability to modulate.
Okay, thank you. I bet you wouldn't be able to do that with pneumatic controls.
No.
I mean, it's amazing that a building still has pneumatic controls in it in this day and age of computers and digital and modulating motors and airflow. I mean, they've got it down to a science where they really know what's going on with the building. And it sounds like our building really needs the help over the years because if you if you've got pneumatic controls and you can see the outside going on, you're not controlling anything. I would imagine that all these new systems, though it is a hefty price tag, and when you say it's going to save money, I I would imagine it's going to save quite a bit of money when it comes to the the heating part of it and the ventilation. Is it is there air conditioning with this too, or is that?
It has dehumidification for the classrooms. And and how much it's going to save is an interesting question because when we started this, oil prices were down in the low 2s. And now we're hearing, like, I just left Sunapee School District in New Hampshire, and they locked in at $4 a gallon for the heating season. And so we were initially saying about 70,000 in energy savings at that $2 a gallon range. Now that we're in the $4 a gallon range, those energy savings start to look like 150,000 a year.
So it's all switching over to propane?
It's a high efficiency propane, yep.
It's an old building. It's a modern looking building, but it's it's an old building.
It's such a wonderful project to be part of.
It really is a spectacular building.
I agree.
For folks that had the opportunity to tour with Todd, I've had a couple tours with Todd, it really is impressive to see how well it was built from the bottom all the way to the top and all the systems inside. So that's essentially why the board made the decision to go with we initially, we looked at A, B, C, D. You know, A is the Cadillac, B is, oh, gosh, I don't want to get into the essentially, you get what I'm saying? A is the high, and D was the low, the bare minimum. And so we took pieces of each one to try and keep the school going in the direction it has been going in, you know, forward, thinking ahead, planning ahead, looking at classroom size and how the school's being utilized and all the different code changes and upgrades and different thinking, of course, now. And that's how we came to where we are now. Essentially, it's not all the greatest things. It's not all the most modern. Those things come with an even heftier price tag. So the board really, really took the time over the last three years to kind of try and trim down areas. We added a few nice to haves there in there, and we haven't received any questions, but one of the nice to have was a softball field for the for the girls. There's a, you know, yes, the girls can play across the street. Otis Nelson, this is a quick story, I wanted to bring it up last night. Otis Nelson is a spectacular individual who takes a lot of pictures of a lot of sporting events. And I happen to be lucky enough to witness a boys JV baseball game and then middle school track at the same time. And Otis was there taking pictures. My son ran track, this is last spring. And we go over and watch the baseball, and he'd go over there, he's like, where's the softball? I don't know where the softball field is. And I said, oh, they're playing right now, but you're gonna go across the street. Oh, I guess I didn't realize that. So that's part of our proposal. Let's bring it all on the same campus. Let our girls play on our own turf. And so that's why the board decided, you know, this is that's the direction we want to go, a little bit of equity there and equality. So I'm trying to think that there's been talk about the, I know we're primarily Chester, but we're all in the same union. We've got the Cavendish Playground, that's a that's another that could be bordering on the need to have. It's basically essentially all but condemned. They've done some fundraising, group and teams are trying to get some money, and and we thought that a good part of this bond would be to help that out as well. Another awesome, awesome thing is we've seen there's a there's a lot of talk about these ESER funds. I don't really know what ESER means, but I know what it does, is it allows us to have funds.
Sean knows.
Sean knows what ESER is for. And so if you need to know that, Sean can answer that. But essentially, part of the ESER funds, we were able to get the Chester Andover Schools' heating and ventilation system upgraded. We're looking at it around $870,000. That would have been part of this 20 20 million dollar bond. We lucked out in that area. So again, between EEI, Todd's work, the board's work, there's there's been a lot of good research going into this, and and we feel strongly that this is this is the direction we want to see it go in, and there's an obvious need. So happy to help with any more questions or comments.
A question about the bond itself. How long would it be for, and what's the interest rate on it? How do you know? How do you determine that?
I can't remember those numbers.
I I believe it's a 20-year bond.
20, yep.
But and the interest rate, the way interest rates work is the Vermont Bond Bank aggregates all the bonds that pass in November or the the winter in the state, and then they'll sell the bonds on the open market. So the they give you a projected rate, and then you don't know the actual rate until, I think, April is when they when they lock that down.
What would be the the schedule on it as far as how long is it going to take? Summer or?
I I would think it's it's a two-year project. So from the first, one thing that's nice about this project is we've already done the lion's share of the mechanical and architectural design. So if it gets approved by the voters, we would then go into permitting, final review, and ordering long lead time items. Right now, air handlers, electrical switchgear is taking 52 weeks to get, and air handlers are taking about 28 weeks. So the if all goes well, we would, the the target projects for the first summer would be the boilers and the conversion, so you get that savings right away and getting off of oil onto propane. Then the ductwork in upper floor classrooms, because of the significant manpower shortages in southern Vermont in particular, the project couldn't be done just in the summer. Or if it was just limited to summer, it would take three to four years because there's just not the ability to get 50 ductwork guys in Chester in. So what what we would plan to do is do as much as possible during the summers and then work, and we're doing this in Springfield right now, where we'll take over, let's say, six classrooms, do that ductwork, do that lights, and then, you know, do temporary classrooms in the cafeteria or the stage or the gym, and then shift it around. So we haven't talked about all those logistics, but that's that's probably what's necessary due to just the manpower shortages that we're seeing.
Wow. Jim Goodfellow has a question.
Oh, thanks, Lee.
Mr. Goodfellow, you have a question?
I think he's muted as well.
Jim?
Thanks, Arnie, I couldn't find the mute button.
Go ahead, Jim.
I just wondered if there's any grant money, state money, federal money, any money from anybody that has been factored into this proposal?
So the the only, A, because we were able to use some of the federal money for the ventilation system at Chester Andover, that was taken off the top and has already been taken out. We are anticipating rebates from Efficiency Vermont, somewhere in the $100,000 range is what we would would project. And then there's no current school state building aid. It hasn't been for quite some time. But those are the grants we would be targeting.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? I have another one, sorry. So as Chair of the Emergency Services Building Committee, I recognize the position that you're in, and I appreciate all the work and information. One of the things that we had to consider as a committee was, what happens if the bond doesn't pass? Have you guys thought about that? What's your plan?
Yeah, yeah, of course, we've definitely thought about that. So Todd and I have been talking. We haven't had an official board meeting where we can discuss this because we were kind of waiting for the result. But a lot of the initial chatter was based around what systems do we need to approach to repair first? And essentially, the elevator is the most important thing right now. We have to be able to access all three floors according to the state. So that would probably be the first thing we have to approach to repair immediately. But then I think we're gonna have to really consider doing extensive capital improvement projects and budgeting for that. And it would be nice, again, the nice to have would be to kind of approach each project in the most cost effective way. So the bond allows us to do that because you tear down the ceiling to do this, and you do redo the ceiling, do the lights, you do the controls, you do everything kind of all encompassing. So we would have to kind of rethink about how to look at that and kind of reorganize all of that.
I think the short term answer to your question is, we have thought about that, but waiting on the results from next week, and we have an interior plan maybe in our heads. There's a couple, two or three different avenues that we can approach this after, but we'd like to not put those down into hard times. We're hoping for, we're hoping for a good result next week. But we have thought about it. I mean, obviously, we want to make sure we're covering all our bases in case that, you know, something doesn't go, you know, the way we're hoping it will.
But I, again, I'm putting in my personal Lee Gustafson hat here, not select board, and just I'm a little bit concerned that it's not really been much consideration for reducing the use of the building by a third. So if you did that, then you could work on that third, you know, at your leisure, however long it takes, and theoretically not necessarily impact. And I realize that I I'm not part of the high school, I don't know, but I know that any available space is used regardless of whether you actually need it or don't need it. So just a little thought that I had was if if there was some way to not access the third floor, do all the third floor, then that would be my the way I'd approach it. But I'm not in your shoes, so I can't really say.
That would be great if we could. Unfortunately, the building, even though built for 600-plus students with the advancement in the past, I'm not going to guess years, 10, 15 years of special services, we occupy the whole building. There's a lot of spaces that are used for non-traditional, I shouldn't say non-traditional, for special services. So the building is being used in its full capacity, but not full capacity of people. So but like Mike said, could we, if they needed to shut down three or four classrooms like they are at Springfield and move them to somewheres else, we could do that. Obviously, we moved the elementary school into the high school and added 275 people, but I mean, we had people in closets and, you know, I mean, wasn't ideal, but we could make it work. So we could do that, so it's kind of along the lines of what you're saying. I think I don't think we'd be able to shut down a whole floor, but we would build, definitely build, accomplish three or four or five classrooms.
Thank you.
Yep.
And to add to that real quick, there's been a lot of talk about the school capacity, and that does make sense. Those are all really great questions, you know? If it's built for 600 and we have 340, 350 with a fluctuating number, you know, can't we do this and can't we do that? But if we think about how the mechanical systems have changed dramatically over the last 50 years, we also look at the education system and how that's changed. And I'll tell you, in the last 20 years, we've seen some extensive changes, classroom size and special needs and all this other stuff that kind of coincides with it. And the school is definitely being used. It's just a little bit of a different use. While we don't have 25 kids in every classroom, every classroom's being utilized in some ways, shape, or form to kind of keep up with the different changes in the education system. So it's it's an interesting world we live in now. We've had a lot of changes.
I know I wanted to touch bases a little bit more, make sure we talked about the elementary, the elementary schools. I mean, the majority of the bond is encompassing the high schools, but Josh touched on it a little bit. I mean, we secured almost $870,000 for air handlers at Chester Andover, some upgrades to weatherization and new boilers, LED lighting, and fire alarm upgrades at both the elementary schools, Cavendish as well, along with the upgrade to the more than deteriorating playground up there. So our focus, although the majority of the money is the high school, we are paying very close attention to our elementary schools. With what's going to happen, especially at Chester Andover, is going to move this school in really good shape. If the whole bond passes, our school will be in in really good condition. We'll have we'll have some key places for our We'll have some key places for our children to be in, something for community members to be proud of.
Really very enthusiastic about it. Like I said last night, you know, my son, he attends, he's a freshman now, he's been a GM, you know, since he could at seventh grade. And I, my, you know, I tip it to, you know, all the students. We had a couple comments about, you know, you go to one classroom and it's 63, and then you go to the other classroom and it's 82. And that's, again, those fluctuating pneumatic controls have failed, you know, the valves just don't open or they open too far. So essentially, these kids are really, really tough. And I love that about all of them. And the education there is, from what I've seen, is top-notch. The options that these students have there, it's just, for a public school, it is far beyond a lot of other public schools. So they're doing a great job. Students are learning, we've got to do some, we've got to do some work there. Everybody knows that and we're working hard at that. We've had some significant changes to both the board and the administration the last couple of years and a lot of positive things to come. So this is, again, you know, I'm enthusiastic about this and hopeful that when people do vote, that they have all the information they need.
We have a question from?
Steve.
Steve Mancuso, I believe, or Steve? You have your hand up, Steve?
Yes, I have a question. Is there a list, a specific list of these upgrades that you're looking for? Can you detail every system? You know, can you let the taxpayer that's going to vote for this consider what you want to do and why is necessary? Thank you.
Sure thing, Steve. If you go to TRSU, the TRSU website, you can see, I can't remember exactly what tab it's under, but it's definitely under there. It's got a very detailed list.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
The impression that I had from your contingency, if it doesn't pass, what I get from that is that we're going to spend a lot, lot more money to do the same thing if you're going to do it piecemeal, a little bit at a time.
Yeah, unfortunately, yeah.
Which is, doesn't seem like that would be advantageous to taxpayers or to anybody that's going to be investing in a project like this. I mean, it's a tough time, inflation's really high, interest rates are rising, but the school has been in need for a long time. And I think my personal opinion is that the longer you put out repairs like this or upgrades like this, you're going to get less for a lot more money as time goes on. So sometimes you just have to make the decision to do what you have to do. And it seems like if it doesn't make it, we're going to be spending a lot more money to get a lot less.
That is such a, I'm really glad you said that. Sitting on the board, obviously, I'm a taxpayer and I'm frugal, and I sit on the board with other frugal taxpayers. We've all thought the same thing. We've said this exacting, it's just the right time, it's just the right time because we know, all right, we're all in this together, so to speak. And we look at it and we said, shoot, you know, really, honestly, what's it going to look like next year? What's it going to look like for the year after? We don't really know, we can't predict that. So a year and a half ago, we decided, you know what, we're going to lock in and we're just going to keep moving forward. And that's why we're here now. And yeah, it is very, it would be much more challenging on the students, it'd be much more costly for the taxpayers if we did prolong and picked it apart and pieced it together. But that's a decision that folks are just going to have to make, I guess.
Arnie?
I think we have another question out. Ms. Goodfellow?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to say it's clear that the board has worked hard over the last three years to take a look at what the school today needs as opposed to the school that was built 50 years ago and needed was anticipated. And I just wanted to thank you for all of your hard work and wish you well in getting this passed. I think Arnie made some very important points about how much more expensive it will be to have necessary changes made in a piecemeal fashion. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
Arnie, I'd just like to remind everyone that the ballots that were sent out, this issue is not on that, so people have to come in to vote. Can they vote early, Julie, on this?
Yes, yes, you can request.
Okay, so you can vote early on this and on the day?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. That's important because people that might have already voted, already voting, haven't voted on this topic.
Because it wasn't on there purposely, you know.
Any other questions? Well, I want to thank all you guys, the folks that are involved with this. It's a lot of time, it's a lot of work. Being a volunteer or on the school board, it's not an easy task sometimes, it takes a lot out of your life, but I appreciate the fact that there are people that have stepped up and done all the work to get this far. And hopefully, people do their homework and realize what's going on and see, you know, take a look at the school, take a look at the lists that are on the supervisory union, what's there. There's very little that I looked at that were frills. They're basically all necessities of things that that school really needs to have happen to bring it up into, you know, the 21st century. And the one thing about the girls going across the street, that was a safety issue for a long time with the softball. It would be nice to get them back on campus because they should be included with everybody else that are involved in sports at the school. And you have enough room there for it, so I think that's a nice part of the project also. But thanks again for the presentation and taking the time to come here and helping get people informed about the project and getting the word out there. And I hope it's successful on Tuesday.
Thank you. Thank you all.
There is one more hand up.
Oh, hang in, guys. Sorry. I'm sorry, I didn't see the hand until just now. Go ahead, sir.
That's okay. So I have an interesting predicament, maybe I just need to be educated on it. I'm registered to vote in Springfield because it's my primary residence, but I also have a property in Chester and I definitely want to vote on this. How does that work?
You can only vote in the place that you are registered as a primary residence.
Okay, so I really don't have a say in this?
No, not as far as you're casting your vote, no. No, no, you're registered in where you live.
Yeah, yeah, that just seems a little unfair.
That's the laws set by the legislation.
Thank you.
All right, thanks again.
We can.
Next item on our agenda is a review of the general fund budget. And I know it's an early time of year and there's a lot of open lines on this, but can you give us just an update on it, Julie?
I can. This is also your quarter three financials are shown in the 2022 column. Again, this is a, it's hard to tell where you're at at the end of quarter three, you know, for the town, most everything happens in quarter four. But it at least shows you where we're at as of September 30th. It's the first round of the budget. Yes, there's still a lot of holes, a lot of estimates have not come in. You know, getting bids on most everything right now is challenging. So we did get fuel bids back, which was great. We got locked in for propane at $1.67, which is amazing. So that is definitely a positive. And the diesel and gasoline bid, we actually had a company from Springfield, Mass, a very large company from Springfield, Mass, bid on our diesel and fuel. And it's unfortunate to go away from our more local vendors, but he was significantly less to the tune of possibly 30 cents a gallon. So we did make that move, where we'll try it for the year, but we did get favorable bids on fuel and propane, so that was very positive. The other main drivers in the budget really at this point, I mean, we had to, you know, some of the cost overruns that you're going to see from 2022 and the increases in 2023 have to do with the level of cybersecurity that we had to do for our entire computer systems. We are on networks here and so therefore completely open to cyber attacks. What happened in 2022 is some, not legislation, some rules came down at the insurance level that said if you don't meet certain levels, they will not cover you if there is ever a cyber attack for your municipality. So we did not go all the way to everything that was needed, but we made sure that we checked the boxes. We went out to bid, got some pricing on that, so we do know that we're getting the best pricing. But there was increases in all the computer lines, unfortunately, and that will carry through till 2023 as well.
Well, it's been a hard year for everyone and everything. I've seen it in the trades, I've seen it everywhere for the price of items, it's gone skyrocketing.
Absolutely.
And the cost of living, which is also going to affect payroll for all our employees this coming year.
Yep. I am putting in, in all of my 18 years, our cost of living raise has been 1%. And when you watch the trend, I mean, it's been about, you know, some years it's way under, but most years it's about average. This year, this year the COLA is above 8.5%. So I am not proposing that we increase 8.5% for cost of living, but this budget reflects a cost of living increase of 5%. And I am just putting that in there now, kind of seeing where we land. But as everybody is facing cost increases, so are our employees as well in their homes. So I am, this budget does show a 5% cost of living increase.
And it seems like our, I know we shop around every year for our medical.
Yep.
We always get the best deals we can.
Yep.
But every year, it seems like it goes up 10% no matter what.
Well, last year we didn't see as high of an increase, we were lucky. This year, this year, we are up 11. A lot of places are up 16 and higher, we're up 11. We are having changeover in staff, which, you know, some of, we've had a couple of retirements this year, being replaced with no longer a family plan but a single plan, so that certainly helps. We are offering the opt-off for employees. We do have one individual taking advantage of that. We do also have a couple of employees that are going to be 65 in the middle of this year, while we absolutely cannot encourage or require that they go on Medicare, that is against federal law. I have spoken to them, they are, have not been encouraged, but they are saying that they, definitely is their plan because it's a way to save the town money. And they will still be made whole, they will still have the same coverage, it's just to a different provider, and they're very willing to do that. So that will be, we'll recognize that savings at some point during the year as well. So employees are being very mindful. We've had that conversation at a staff level of the value of that benefit and, but we also understand, and this gets into the next topic, but I also recognize that I don't know how many more years that is sustainable. It's a sad conversation to have. I think it's our number one retention tool for staff and it is why we attract good employees from all around. But we're at a point where we have, in the next five to seven years, a good number of our staff will be between 60 and 65 and have been employed here for 30 years or longer. So retirements, that changeover, we're going to have a lot of in the next five to seven years. So if we're going to start making a change, now really is the time. So I don't, you know, I am going to be asking in the next agenda item that we, you know, that employees that are here effective November 1st retain their benefit as it stands, but any new hires after November 1st pay a percentage of their premium only. It will still keep us very attractive. I've done a lot of research with budding towns and towns throughout the state. I think it will still keep us very attractive, but unfortunately, I think it might be time.
Well, we have a medical system in this country that's not sustainable.
No.
It's just, it's going to implode one of these days and disappear. I really, every time we're on this topic, it just irks me on how this country handles it. I don't understand it. It just boggles my mind that we go through this every year, it affects all kinds of different parts of our society and we just keep plugging away, dropping 10 or 15% and a bit more of it every year, and onward we go.
Yep.
Now, that's my little spiel, sorry.
No, I'm with you.
Anybody have any questions or comments regarding the budget? I know it's early and there's a lot of unknowns in it, but did anything stand out to anybody when they were checking it out? It is early, Julie.
It's very early. You're just getting a first look. Things start to, kind of, the picture starts to get painted a little clearer each meeting as we go, so.
All right, so we'll go on to our next item, which is kind of related to what we were just talking about and kind of already summed it up regarding the health insurance for new hires.
Yes, so it needs to be officially part of our policy. But, yeah, I just won't even get into why I can't do the whole policy, but if we could make, I would love to have a vote approving that, that new hires will contribute 5% would be the start of premium only.
And what's the date for the start of this?
November 1st.
November?
Kind of a little bit retroactive, yeah.
So I'll make that motion as stated.
No, this year.
This year, November?
A little bit retroactive.
Oh, oh, okay.
So I'll make that motion as stated by Julie.
And I'll second it.
So Heather's the motion, Lee is the second. Any discussion on this? So this is going to affect new hires?
This is new hires.
And no one else?
Nobody else. No, this will affect new hires. It will help us retain the staff that we have, and there's no way to break it from the staff that you have without there being a significant financial impact to them. And I really just don't feel that that is a good thing to do to our employees. But new hires, it's a perfect time to transition because we have a lot of people retiring in the next five to seven years.
Yeah, we have a lot of open places that we're going to be looking for new hires.
Exactly. Yep, exactly. So.
When we have something like this, it opens the door. It opens the door at 5% and then when the negotiations happen, whether it's with the police department, because that's a little different now, or with our employees in general, well, it could be six, it could be seven during budget years and stuff. I understand the reasoning behind it, everybody does it. I've never been one that's been for having our employees pay anything towards it. I've always been an advocate for what we've offered over the time, but I understand why it comes up all the time.
I would love to keep it 100%. I would love to keep it 100%.
I would love 100%.
Yep, I just don't know that it's.
For me.
I know. We should all have it, that's just.
Don't go down that road, Arnie. I believe there's a motion on the floor.
And I think.
There is, and there's discussion now on that motion.
And I think it's important to note for people out there who maybe don't realize that a lot of the employees have 100% health insurance. We have given up a lot of our benefits over the years to keep that. So we do not have dental anymore, we do not have vision anymore, we are just getting long-term disability back because of the police department union negotiation. You know, we gave up, you know, a week of vacation time so that we are capped at five weeks after 20 years. You know, there's a lot of benefits that have been given up to keep this benefit, so it's, the town does not have, there's not a whole plethora of benefits and, you know, so the employees really understand the value of that benefit, so they have given up benefits over the years. There have been years where we've given up raises to be able to keep the benefit, you know, there's been a lot of give and take over the years to keep it.
And that's all true. Having said that, we have a huge healthcare crisis in this country and we have a lot of people who, you know, what was the mean wage, you know, when we did that study, is quite low. So whether you purchase a property here or rent, these costs are being passed on to the taxpayers or renters in some way. So. these costs are being passed on to the taxpayers or renters or some way, in some way. So I'm okay with the 5% and for new employees. And I think it's just, you know, something that's, from my point of view, a bit overdue, but we need to do it because you can't take the hit on, I think it's 10% of our total budget is going up every year for, you know, you have to do something about it, I think. So I think it's a responsible thing to do at this time.
I just always like to be careful about balancing a budget on the backs of your employees. In government, that happens. In the private sector, it does not. So I just try to be mindful of that.
Any further discussion on this before we vote? All those in favor of the motion as stated, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Did you vote nay?
I said nay.
Okay. I thought that was a question.
It's horsing around.
It's more principle. I didn't think the nays were going to win on this one. It was just me.
I understand.
Next item on our agenda is an appointment of our deputy health officer. And I believe it's Noah K. Glover is going to be our deputy health officer now.
Yes. Amanda is very busy with health officer issues. And now that Danny Cook has retired from highway, Noah is one of our part-time EMTs, works 20 hours a week at the station. And finding tasks for him to do, he has been helping Amanda. So we would like to be able for him to actually have the title so that he can have some level of authority.
Well, and also, when she's out of town, it falls back to the chair of the select board.
Yes.
So we really need one.
And this is just one person's sign, so I'm assuming you would just vote, make a motion to have.
Authorize the chair to sign.
I make a motion for the chair to be able to sign the appointment of the deputy health officer for Noah Glover.
Second. Heather's the motion. Lee's the second. Any further discussion on it?
Hallelujah. That's my discussion.
It has been a busy department.
Oh, my word. Well, and I think since a long time ago, and you guys all know that I was act, I was health officer for a while. Oh, God, help me. And it's a really big role, and it keeps on getting bigger and bigger. So the fact that we have Amanda and we have a deputy and Arnie or someone else doesn't have to be, you know, doing something that there's a lot of knowledge that goes into this, too.
That's our board of health.
So I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
Is the 875-2300 number his home? I mean, he lives in.
No, that's at the station.
Okay, thank you. That's what I assumed, but I didn't want to assume anything.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, it's his work number, which will, it will be his work number.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All set. New business, future agenda items. I know we're going to be talking about the short-term rentals at our next meeting and possibly a simple lease for the community gardens.
As long as I have them back from Jim, yep.
Anything else?
Budgets.
The budget's going to be there.
Forever.
Forever.
And.
The next couple of months.
The SR, SRDC is going to be here to provide an update on the Working Communities Challenge.
Good.
And then on December 7, budgets. And then Ted Brady, who is the executive director of VLCT, has a goal of visiting every select board in the state of Vermont. So he's coming to see you.
Well.
Hallelujah.
You get the, you get the big guy.
Should we dress up?
No, because he won't be. We are dressed up.
Anybody else have anything that they might want to see on future agendas?
Not at this time.
All set. Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night.
I don't get to vote when I'm voting aye. Recording stopped.
That's right. Sad. It really is. So sad.
I'm exhausted, too, man. I had an 8 o'clock doctor appointment this morning. I got up at 6:00 AM to prepare for it.
Oh, thank you.
See you. There? Yep, yep. It would take so much off the plate for the whole country. It would be unreal.
I'm coming, Heather.